All right.
Yeah, this was mine. Kip's way back.
All right. All right, well, welcome everybody. I'll call to order the special meeting of the Federalway City Council for February 20th, 2024. We draw please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, we are here for a study session for possible expansion of the Joint Operations Maintenance Facility. We'll have a presentation. I've asked our city administrator, Brian Davis, to essentially oversee this and bring in subject matter experts, and he'll explain it from here. I'll turn it over to Brian Davis at this time.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So as mentioned, we're here for this special meeting to talk about the possible expansion of the operation.
Recording in progress.
So again, we're here to discuss, a special meeting to discuss the possible expansion of the operation maintenance facility to accommodate additional office space as City Hall in the future will not provide enough capacity for operations. Really appreciated the collaboration on this presentation, and Kevin Pelley is going to start it off to talk about the decision-making methods that we're using to present this presentation that will inform the recommendation that the mayor has for you.
Thank you. All right. Colonel Pelley.
Yes, so starting out appropriately, Mayor, Colonel Pelley, we're taking a approach that we used in the military. There's a lot of different ways to look at courses of action. This is just a way that we can quickly kind of compare and contrast what options we have, what's important to us, and then make a recommendation for going forward. See, the approach that we're going to use is we're going to frame the environment. What are we looking at? What's the problem we're looking at? And by problem, we're just defining where we are and where we want to be, and then develop the courses of action and compare those, and hopefully come up with a recommendation that we agree on. So framing the environment, the current state, where are we now? We know that right now we have a Joint Operations Maintenance Facility that will be rebuilt and expanded, and we have an opportunity here to possibly expand on that expansion and use that for a portion of City Hall. City Hall will eventually reach its current, reach its capacity limits. Right now, without a study, we don't know exactly when that will be. We just know that certain departments have already met their limits as far as space allocation goes. There is some room for reallocating some of that, but we're going to exceed the capacity of this building. And then we do have, obviously, TC3 in the mix, redevelopment of a 10-acre block downtown, Performing Arts Center, Town Square, Federalway Transit Center. So we have an area that we could possibly relocate City Hall. So the end state, what we are looking at, what do we want? And this is what we think that as a city is a good example of our end state, an operations and maintenance facility, a City Hall, and a redeveloped TC3 that collectively or separately meet the needs and aspirations of our residents, visitors, employees in the most cost-effective manner. So digesting all of that, how can we provide a maintenance facility, City Hall, and TC3 parcel, meeting the needs of our residents, visitors, employees while remaining fiscally responsible? So here's what we have. A maintenance operations facility is at a 30% design stage, progressing towards construction. Right now, that is without the addition of a second story that would alleviate future capacity at City Hall. We have a time constraint on that, we'll talk about in a second. The current maintenance and operation facility, we know is in poor condition, severe capacity limitation, needs replacement as soon as possible, that right now we are in the process of redeveloping that maintenance facility. If we, if expanding the new maintenance and operations facility is the preferred option for providing additional office space for this building and our City Hall, that change needs to be done now. We looked, I believe, one March is the deadline that we could make, start making that change without penalties to either cost or to construction dates. So developing the courses of action, what can we as a council, we as a city, do? One, we could add office space to the maintenance and operations facility if by March 1st we choose to spend an additional amount of money to increase the capacity at that location. Two, alleviate future City Hall, adding office space. We're in a business park, there is space available here, we could buy or lease. Or three, constructing a new City Hall with the capacity to accommodate present and future office space and meets the needs of the city. And Keith is going to go ahead into detail on those courses of action. Are there any questions so far on how we're kind of framing this issue? Keith?
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Keith Nevin, Community Development Director. So we know we have choices in front of us, and, and as Kevin said, the, the timing issue related to the O&M facility, you know, makes it feel like we've got an opportunity or not, depending on whether it's truly an opportunity. And so part of this is kind of breaking down this opportunity, as well as the other potential opportunities, to see what actually is the best course of action for the city and for what reasons. So the first choice that we have in front of us, as was mentioned at the retreat, at the council retreat on Saturday, was to potentially put a second floor on the new O&M building, which is, as you can see from the first bullet, approximately 19,750 square feet for a price tag of about $10 million. So using a national average of 200 square feet per office employee, this would accommodate 98 employees. As we talked about at the retreat, 60 would be Public Works Parks and a small department, and then there's an additional amount of square footage that would accommodate room for growth. And if you were going to build a new facility, that seems like that's the prudent thing to do. So when you break down the math, at $10 million, this equates to $506 per square foot. And based on 2023 data from the Cummings Group, a single-story office should cost about $313 per square foot, and a high-rise office is more like $660 a square foot. So this price is about 3/4 of the way to the 660 and about 160% past the 313, so somewhere in between. The second choice is to look around West Campus at, it's, it's hard to not drive around or walk around this neighborhood without seeing for lease signs. There are a number of office spaces currently available, and given the remote work post-pandemic and glut of existing office space, not just in Federalway but elsewhere, that is likely to continue for the foreseeable future. So I asked Tanya to reach out to some of the leasing agents and find out what is space going for. And what we found is somewhere between $16 and $19 per square foot triple-net. And what triple-net means is that basically includes the real estate taxes, the maintenance, and the insurance, so it's the all-in price for leasing space in privately-owned office building. For 19,750 square feet, this would equate to roughly $350,000 per year, and the estimate for the O&M addition is roughly $575,000 per year. So if you just look at this in a vacuum and say, okay, is adding a second story on the O&M facility the cheapest solution that's available to the city? The answer is clearly no. The third item is, on this particular option, is by looking for additional space in this neighborhood, it would allow departments to stay proximate to each other, and operationally, that's a big deal for the city. Having worked at a city where our City Halls were on two different sides of a freeway, having that proximity and being able to walk in between city office spaces would be optimal. The third choice that we have, and we've talked about this a little bit off and on, is to build a new City Hall. And we spent two years talking about downtown, both internally and with the community. We've heard from Ad hoc Committee of City Council, from Citizens Committee that was formed last year to talk about this specific topic, as well as from the Chamber of Commerce, all supporting a move of City Hall downtown. And there's a lot of different pieces to that, including access to transit, you know, putting our fingerprints on the remake of downtown, and there's, that's a whole rabbit hole in and of itself to go down. So committing $10 million to a location outside of downtown does not support any of these conversations that we had last year. So I believe that is the last slide that I have this evening. Is Steve next? I'm going to turn the mic over to the Finance Director, Steve Groom.
Because we need to talk dollars, don't we? EJ is facing an imminent timeframe on the construction schedule, and I'm also facing a timeline for our budget and also for debt issuance that has to be in conjunction with the construction of the maintenance facility. So I've previously shown these two amortization schedules that is just, quite frankly, a wall of numbers. I tried to make this really simple. For the 25-26 budget, what would the budget numbers look like, should we choose a one-story or a two-story maintenance facility? In both cases, for 2025, for example, our SWIM, our surface water maintenance, is, is the most we can charge that fund is going to be $1 million per year. REIT, also, we expect to start out at $1 million a year until some of our existing debt gets paid off. The savings from fuel and maintenance is going to be what it is, and that's not going to change in any scenario, so the only difference is going to fall to the general fund. A one-story maintenance facility would hit the general fund for $104,000 per year, and this is the beginning of a 25-year commitment. A two-story facility would be 679, it would all, the difference would go completely to the general fund, so that is a difference of 575,000. The same is true for the second year of the biennium. But as you've heard, we've been sharpening our pencils, we've been looking at other options. To compare, as a Plan B, we could be facing a, a general fund cost increase in the budget of 575,000, or we could look at vacant space. Now, as Keith pointed out, that wouldn't necessarily be in 2025, because we would want to do some space planning, and that amount, the dollar amount, we don't know yet. It seems to me like it wouldn't be in 2025 necessarily. Now, I have got a little bit of data when I look at our audited financials. I can see that every year in our, in our comprehensive financial report, we always report the number of, of FTEs, full-time employees. I've split it into two categories, blue for police and green for everything else, primarily because police are downstairs on their separate floor. In the everybody else category, I don't have the split out on this graph, it would make it busy. How many are Public Works employees that are out in the field, not in City Hall? Same is true for Parks employees. What I can tell you, though, is looking at the budget over 20 years, the budget has typically been able to afford an increase of just under two employees per year. Now, that's using budget as a constraint of, of, of growth. Perhaps that's anecdotal. I also want to point out that I think 2004 is when we moved into our new current City Hall. Did I go back and look at financial records? No, I went downstairs to look at the brass plaque on the wall that's got three of your names, and it said 2004. So, but, but my point is, is that financially, budgetarily, we have been able to afford an increase of about 1.8 employees per year. Now, we don't make budget decisions in a vacuum. I have a waitlist, as everybody knows. And competing for those extra dollars in the general fund seems to be pretty reliably jail cost increases, insurance cost increases. We brought those, I think, every year in the last two years as budget amendments. There are some signalized intersections that EJ tells me we have 80 of. They cost between $1.5 to $2 million each, the five oldest ones predate 1980. So that I see as a budget concern if we're considering making 25-year commitments. And deferred Parks capital projects, those are such things as fire panel here for the City Hall, overlay projects for, for, for Parks paths. There are things that are on the waitlist, and, and as we all know, the real estate excise tax that could fund Parks capital projects just has not been coming in. So we do have some deferred stuff there. Finally, I always would prefer that we have, that we leave ourselves some wiggle room in a budget. I don't want us to be spending every penny as it comes to us. We want to save ourselves some wiggle room for when things arise, because I think you all have seen that, that things do arise. So with that said, I'm to the recommendation screen. Budget, budget decisions are always policy decisions, so that's why all of this comes in this framework. Hand it back to you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, and with that, the mayor's recommendation is to proceed with, with the construction as planned, as we've been planning for this whole time, which is basically to not add the second story to the, to the maintenance facility. Also, with information within that recommendation that you, we want you to be aware of, is that we will be conducting a space needs analysis for City Hall to determine exactly where we are with, with our space and when and how much additional space we will need. And then also, within the ongoing discussions of the development agreement with, with One Trent on the TC3 property, we have proposed a deferral on the decision whether or not to put City Hall on the TC3 property until 2028. And we, they've indicated that that is, so far, is acceptable, but we don't have, the whole agreement is not done, but on this point, we agree. And so we want you to have that bit of information with you as well. And that is it.
All right, Council, any, any questions of staff? Councilmember Seth Dawson?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. My first question is if, so if you build a second story, then you can take 60 staff to that facility, is what I read?
So the, the plan right now, with the space that we have planned, the architect has space for 60. With the, with the multiplier of an average office space needs, it's more like, it's closer to 100, if we were to use that as a, as a typical need standard. But it's, it's between that number is what we'd be looking at.
So if you were to do that, then it would free up space here?
Yes.
The City Hall? And would that still mean we need to build another, consider another location?
It would likely, it would likely defer that need to a future, further into the future.
Okay, and?
Or, or, I mean, I should clarify, defer the need to, we could still put a City Hall in downtown, it would probably be a scaled-down version, but there's a lot of factors involved with that. But if we were to, if we were to spend the money on the second floor, we'd have to look at, at the time we were to go into debt on a City Hall downtown, we'd have to see where we're at and see if that's something that we'd have the capacity to do. But we would have, between this building and the second floor of the maintenance facility, we should have some, some room for, for a time.
But if City Hall was to move to TC3, then this will be sold, probably?
Yes.
So there's that money that we have not talked about in this conversation, right? And also, all the dollar figure that we saw per year, is that leasing or purchasing?
Which, which number?
305 and/or the?
That's, that's the typical, so the 3?
350.
350, was it?
Is it 350 or 305?
575.
Okay, that one.
Yeah, 350. That's the, that's what Keith mentioned, that Tanya went out and just asked around to what the typical leasing rate was, between 16 and 19 square feet, a dollar per square feet, excuse me.
So that would be leasing, not purchase?
Yes. Purchasing is an option, but that's the, that's the going lease rate.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McDaniel?
The 60 potential staff to 100, is it strictly Parks or is there a mixture of different departments that we're looking at moving towards that?
That's, that's to be determined, but likely it would be Public Works, Parks that are currently in City Hall over there. And then if it's 60, it'd be a smaller department. If it's 90, we would probably just have that space for growth rather than move more people over there.
And then the 575, we're looking at $575,000 extra a year for that. When we did the price estimates and you came back, I think it was $500 a square foot or something like that, it was close, under the 600. Does that include, just strictly the building, or is that cost including like the actual changes to the parking lot and all that stuff that are included in that?
That's everything, yep.
Oh, it's everything on that one? Okay. And then?
And that's probably why it's a little bit higher, because of the site that we'd have to build into.
They had mentioned that we had to add a second, we'd have to add that second staff, which is then changing quite a bit of other designs and stuff for that, so. All right. And then, you had mentioned that you guys would be doing some, a survey or in-house kind of account. If we're growing usually at two full-time people per year, is that what you guys are looking at doing, is that going to give us an estimate of like how close we are to maxing out this place, and, or do we know what that is already?
So that, part of the study would look at our current space, present and future needs, and then that number would be factored into those needs. I mean, based on our current layout, we could do that, but I think part of the study, correct me if I'm wrong, it would look at how we can better utilize the space than we currently do, and then that would also provide potentially some, some added space.
And there's no way that's getting done before cutoff decision-making time?
No.
Okay. I think that's it for now, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Dobie, Council President Kochmar, and then Councilmember Honda.
Could you explain to me what the March 1 penalties are in this dire drop-off-the-cliff that I just heard at March 1? What does that really mean?
So the state adopted a new building code a couple months ago, and the city subsequently through LETC adopted the same. That goes into effect March 15th. The new building code requires substantially more sprinklering than what is for the overall site, because this is one project. It also requires substantial upgrades to the electrical in the form of EV chargers for all of the parking spots. So it's about a 30% cost increase, according to our architect, to miss the March 15th deadline for getting a building permit package submitted. So that's the, that's where the deadline hits. We have to, basically, if we don't get it in for the entire project, we end up with a huge cost penalty.
So, you know, the $10 million price tag to put a second story on, that's probably finished, completed, wallboard, heaters, the whole thing, right? So I remember when I was growing up and moved into Twin Lakes, my dad bought a house that he couldn't finish the bathroom, I mean, not the bathroom, but the downstairs, the daylight basement. So they put up, you know, we had all the walls and we built it over time as we needed. Is something like that even an option, or do you have to have it completed? I mean, could you build the infrastructure and all the things that you need and then build out the interior as needed?
It's about the steel, isn't it?
Well, the steel, you got to do and all that, I'm talking about.
No, I mean, I'm talking about the, where the real cost is, but you're the expert, EJ.
Yes, in concept, you could do that. I think the, that would pull down your price, but it wouldn't let you relocate staff if you have an unfinished space. So, but yes, I mean, could you not finish out the interior and treat it more like a commercial warehouse-style building where the tenant comes in and finishes it? Absolutely. That could get punted to the future, but, you know, if you do that and you have unfinished space, it's not usable.
No, I understand that.
So, I mean, you, you'd basically just be building a vacant room on the second story of the building. But to answer your question directly, yes, it's possible.
Okay. The other question, as I think about this, this discussion, the city's in the position now because it purchased an old Target site and lucked out, in my opinion, and got a home run by being able to redevelop it with a great developer and a whole bunch of stuff. I mean, and I could go either way on building the, the, the second story, but it seems to me that we, the real discussion is, should we be buying another piece of property downtown so that we can have it in stack for the next 30 years so we have the flexibility? Because when you tell me we only add two people a year, this building, what is it, 90,000 square feet, as I remember when we first did it, something like that?
It's about 80, 81.
81. And we had a lot of capacity, and, you know, we probably still have a lot of capacity if it got rejiggered a little bit, my guess. But, I mean, really, the discussion is, we were in that, when I was in the meeting, I'm thinking about, okay, what are we going to do for downtown long-term? And this was kind of an interim way to get the step and get there, but really, the discussion is, should we, you know, make another Target deal somewhere? And end up with another piece of land so we have 30-year runway instead of a one-night runway, or whatever it is? So, anyway, those are my comments. I mean, looking at the numbers, I don't think we're ever going to go lease more space down town, down here. That's kind of like not in my, I don't think that's ever going to happen. So the real decision is, do we want to, in my opinion, do we want to go landbank like they did when the school district, when Laird Chambers was the superintendent many, many years ago, or the guy, and he bought all the land that all the schools are on now, because they never ran out of property? But, anyway.
All right, thank you. Council President?
Well, I'm going to play the devil's advocate, Mayor. My, I thought we had to move because we needed space right away. I mean, I thought that was the, and now I think I just heard Steve say that we could only hire two people per year financially. Well, even to get up to 25 people, that's 12 years. So I don't, I'm trying to figure out what, okay, so let's say we don't move and we don't build a second story. So when you're saying City Hall downtown 2028, what does that really mean? Does that mean just 60 or 90 employees? Does that mean police?
If I could, if I could. When we were in anticipation for the retreat, one of the things I was talking to both Brian and Keith about is really pinning down, right now, we've got anecdotal stories about space and about, but we, we haven't approached it from a methodical, not scientific, but, but very thoughtful, methodical approach about just how much space do we have left in the building? And that's why when Keith gave his presentation is with, with the idea that we quantify that before we go out to the public and say, gee, let's build a $70 million City Hall. I think we have to establish need, not want, before we go to the people. And that's why we're in the position we're in. But I also wanted to make sure you guys had the ability to weigh in on, on this decision.
And, and, you know, I had thought that the second story on the maintenance facility was a great idea if the need was there, but it doesn't sound like you have the need right now.
We haven't quantified it. It's just the, the manner in which we would have to be able to, you know, we all work for the public, and here's the standard I, that I adopt, is I have to be able to look somebody square in the eye and tell them, this is what we know. And right now, I can't say we know that we're out of space here. I don't think the case has been made, I don't think that we have been methodical in our approach there.
And I don't think we're going to be there in 2028 either, if we can only hire two people per year. So, I mean, I, I think it's a lovely idea, but, you know, most of the people around here are just having trouble just buying groceries. They're having trouble just paying their bills. And some people, I mean, the legislature even talked about tripling their property tax bill. What on earth are they thinking? So, you know, I guess really frugal is good, if there's an option to, you know, maybe lease property close by if we needed to and then sell the building, that'd be another idea. But I, I don't, I just need to know what we need and what the City Hall downtown is supposed to be and what the purpose is, really. I mean, when we built City Hall here, believe me, I had officers coming to me and saying, well, look, we don't want to be downtown because we don't want to take the bad guy screaming and kicking downtown and pulling him into a building. And they were much happier being here. And, and being here was very, a smart move financially. I think Jack Dobie was on the council at the time, and that was borne out by the fact that the school district built their building right across the street. But, you know, I don't, I don't know why things are going to change in 2028 unless we annex these to the freeway, and I don't think they're real happy about that idea either. So, so I, I just think that there's a whole lot of unknowns, but, but thank you for being cool. But, but thank you for being thoughtful enough to go back and look at it.
Abbot White, I wanted to make sure you guys were part of this. This is a strategic decision. I, Councilmember, so we've got Councilmember Honda, Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember Tran, and then back to Councilmember McDaniel. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So Steve had a slide on employees that we've hired over the last several years. And it comes out to about averaging two a year. That doesn't mean we're only limited to two new employees a year, that's just what...
That's just what history has shown.
The historical.
So they're, yeah. It's not what our capacity is, that's just what we've performed at.
Which is really interesting, considering that we've hired so many folks downstairs in the police department lately.
Yeah, this is over twenty years, so the average is over twenty years.
Is that typical for a city? Who knows? Okay. So I think this is a rather difficult decision because we, at least I don't have a really good understanding of what we need to be building downtown and what our expenses will be in the next ten to thirty years. So we need a parking garage, we need to address that for the PAC. We need to build the MNO facility, which is, what, fifty million or something? I mean, what, if I could see what we will be needing to cover in the next ten to thirty years, it would make this decision a little bit easier. Because we're committing to twenty, twenty-five years for this MNO facility before it's paid off. We have other things we're paying off now. We need the parking garage, who knows what else we need downtown to get downtown built up. We, we've committed to a new park downtown, we voted on that. So I just need to see what our expectations are in the future. Also, if we build the, the facility with just one floor, would it be built so that we could add another floor to it if we needed to?
That's an EJ question.
That's not something we've talked about, no.
And what would make...
I mean, you, you certainly could, but that's, that has not been part of the conversation to date.
Would that add money to the build?
Yes. You would need to upsize, I mean, the foundations are under it, so ultimately, that's, that's where the cost in the, in the conversation right now is, is as far as future-proofing it to add additional stories. You basically need to upsize the foundations to support however many additional floors you want in the future. And then the steel and the ground floor and the first floor to carry those future stories. So, yeah, that, those would both increase.
So we're looking at that building being in use for at least fifty years?
I would hope more like a hundred.
I mean, it's, it's certainly possible that we may need to increase it to, to have something on the second floor, to increase space there. I would like to know what it would cost to just have it ready to, to be able to build up if we needed to. And then we're not talking about the value of this building, because we will, if we were to build downtown, the City Hall downtown, we're not going to need this building. And we own this building.
Yeah, more than likely, yes, but that's an unknown.
Correct. There's a lot of unknowns, that's what I'm trying to say. There's so many unknowns financially. This makes it a decision that's very, very difficult.
I, I would just add that the, so we were proceeding forward with a plan to build the maintenance operation facility with no thought of adding office space. It was only recently introduced that this was a, a, sort of a brainstorming idea, that we wanted to at least bring to your attention. But after looking at the, the needs and analysis of what we know right now, per the mayor's direction, this is, it's not our recommendation to change course at this time, just want to be clear. So that's, and there's no proposed motion for you tonight, either now or on the regular agenda? It's, if you do nothing, we're proceeding forward as planned, and that's what we're recommending. If you wanted to change course, then at this time, you'd need to let us know. But just to be clear, we're recommending to build the facility as planned and then assess the, the needs in a more, in our opinion, a more cost-effective manner.
So you'll be doing a study on how much use we can get out of this building and for how long?
Yes.
So when will that be done?
Well, well, it's on the budget waitlist that Keith, or excuse me, that Steve referred to. But I think it's a priority. We have, like Stephanie's department and Vanessa's department, they have more room. They recently, they both added staff recently, and if they wanted to add more staff, there'd be nowhere for them to go. There are other departments, both Keith and EJ have, have rearranged their departments such that they can add more room. So there's, there's, I think there's some space collectively in City Hall, maybe not. There are some departments who are experiencing other issues, Brian's department's another example. But, yeah, we would do, we would have the study look at what we need to do, and we want to do that sooner than later.
And I do thank Councilmember and the rest of council. I, I think it's about, as I said, quantifying need, not want. And because I think when we do go out to the public that we work, that we all work for, that we need to be able to be, to say, yes, we spent tens of millions of dollars because we have, we have an absolute need. And I don't think that we, I don't think that there's been a real, since I've been mayor, we have really moved things around and gotten, IT is a great example of that. Parks is an example of that. But I don't think we've gone through methodically and cleared out, John could probably speak to that in regard to how we've managed the building. But I think we'd really want to figure out, if we really cleared out and maybe stored things and cleared out space, how much more, how much more space would we have? And I think that's, I think we have an obligation to figure that out.
And then my last question or statement is, I don't know what's happening with the TIF bill down in Olympia. But if we're not going to be able to use that to help us with downtown, we need to know that too. I mean, that's long-term planning, and to me, this is all about long-term planning and managing our, the financial aspect of long-term planning. And I, and we're just making this decision to add the, the second story. To me, I wouldn't do it right now because I don't know long-term what we're looking at.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Walsh?
Yeah. You know, as, as you said, Brian, that the idea of the second story was just kind of a brainstorm idea. And when it first came up, I thought, wow, hey, that could be, you know, that, that could be possibly a really good idea. But with brainstorming, you want to evaluate everything, and, and I agree that it's, it's, you know, evidently not the, the course to take at this point. You know, I, I would love to see City Hall downtown. But the financial feasibility of it, the need, you know, getting back to the need of it, you know, that's the, the question. Whether we'll know what that need is and the priority of it in four years or not, I, I don't know. I think the one thing with, with studying it, you know, I don't know exactly the full history of the annexation attempts, but I, I think that we need to be taking a look at what, what is the realistic possibility or probability of there being annexations in so many years? And what kind of impact that would have on the needs of the, of the city? And, and take that into account, because it, it seems to me as, as eventually, we'll probably have a, a larger city than what we have right now. But is that eventually? Are we talking four years away or forty years away? And, and I know that there's no way to know for sure what that will be. But I think it would be good to, you know, I, I don't know whether that's something that you really can study or not. But, but if it can be studied, we should be exploring it and, and taking that into account as we plan forward to the future. You know, for, for right now, I, I, I agree with the mayor's recommendation that, that, that we don't do the, the second story, that we do some space planning here. And then if, if needs be, in the shorter term, if we do need to rent a small space here, I mean, there's, you know, kitty cornered across here, there's vacant property that's not too much further to walk from, from there to the mayor's office than what it is to walk from the courts to the mayor's office, you know? And so, you know, so that, that is a possibility. But fully examining the prospects of the, of the impact that annexation would have and the, the, the chance of annexation, I think that we need to explore carefully.
So Brian, we're going to, let's dig into that, Brian and Ryan, in regard to, you know, because it's conceivable that that could be put on us as a city in regard to the twenty thousand people that live in the potential annexation area. Before I call on Councilmember Tran, Council President, did you have a quick point to make?
Well, yeah, I was just going to talk about annexation. So I'm guilty, when I was in Olympia, passed a bill that said that if you're going to annex east of the freeway, they had to vote on it. That's what they wanted. And so my opinion is, when you discuss that, you would want to have some open public meetings with people east of the freeway to come over and talk about, you know, the pros and cons. And then they would need to take a vote before you even move further. Because potentially, you know, as people get older, they, things change and properties are sold. And there are eight-acre parcels over there, there are people who do want to develop and can't because the sewers aren't extended. That's one of the biggest issues. So there's several issues to discuss, but the biggest thing would be, are they even interested? And if they are, then how would you move forward? But at some point, yeah, we should be a united area of a hundred and twenty thousand people, not a hundred. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Brian, currently, how many people do we have in this building?
So we have, between seasonals and temps, we have budgeted close to four hundred. We have over at the maintenance yard, how many do we have there?
So if you add, the, the current maintenance yard, we have around forty-five. The, but that is with the parks, maintenance staff being moved over to Steel Lake and Celebration Park and everywhere else centralized. There's about eighty to eighty-five that'll ultimately go into the new maintenance facility.
And then, John, how many at Community Center in Dumas Bay?
Two with Dumas Bay full-time and about another ten part-time. Roughly thirty, about fifteen full-time at the community center and then fifty to a hundred at any given time with lifeguards and all of the other people.
Okay.
So the, the reason I ask that question is, I think I heard earlier Keith mentioned that the national average is about two hundred square feet per employee. And if this building has eighty-one thousand, so in theory, we could accommodate up to four hundred and five people in this building without doing the, the study, just, just roughly.
Yeah, I think, I think we would need to do this study because we're, that's, that's taking a, a very average approach to commercial office space, which technically this is. But at the same time, our needs are different than traditional commercial office space. I'm twenty feet from you right now. This is not a normal conversation that you'd have in a regular office. So there's, there's, yeah. So there's, even our, well, even our courtroom downstairs, it's, it's smaller, it's closer to, to the, to the judge than I am to you. So, there's, we'd need a unique one that's, that's specific to us to really determine where we're at.
Okay. My second question is, let's say if we build the second floor and then we move some of our staff to that new location. What are we, what division, what department that we are going to move to that new building? It's just internal staff or staff that have to deal with the public? The reason I ask that question is, you know, if we move some services and function of City Hall to the, another location, that will create confusion for the public, because they don't know if they should come to this building or the new building to get the service. So that's, that's another point that I want to point out. I do agree with the mayor that at this point, it doesn't make sense for us to build the second story of that maintenance unit. So, so I guess that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've got Councilmember McDaniel, and then back to Dovey.
Thank you. I wish we would have had this conversation with a little bit more time, but it is what it is today. Two, two requests, actually. Could you send me the screenshots or the slides deck you guys had later? And then also, EJ, can you send me the EV information you had mentioned, the new requirements on that one? And then my, I have a couple of quick questions. What is the cost of the study that we're talking about anyways? Is it a nominal fee or is it like a...
Yeah, it depends on how in-depth we want to go. Some preliminary estimates that we have for a, a really good one is about two hundred thousand.
Okay.
But I could tell you that I'm, we're going to take a real sharp eye, and I'm not in favor of spending a bunch of money on studies.
That's a lot of money.
And there's got to be a, there's got to be an easier, less expensive way to do that.
Well, not that sophisticated.
So I'm going to take out the sharp pencil on that one and, because obviously, I think we'd have to bring it back here as well. And we want something that we can all, again, look at our fellow citizens and residents and say, yeah, we're doing the fiscally conservative thing to do, or fiscally responsible thing to do, let's make sure the, the study reflects that too.
Okay, understood. And then, so my next one is going to be the foundation. I like the idea, I mean, I wish we had more time, of understanding what would it cost to build the foundations up so they could have a second later on? Because that's something you can't really undo. And the other one was, is the shell that Councilmember Dovey was talking about. I kind of liked, I would have loved to have been able to see those in the discussions, but I mean, is it realistic? What, no, it's not realistic, but what is the, would the timeframe be to require that kind of information? Is it months on that stuff usually?
So I think we're going to run into the deadline of getting a permit submitted first.
I don't think it's going to go forward, but it's just kind of something for electric...
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd have to talk to the architect to get you an answer. I don't, I don't actually know off the top of my head what it would take. They would have to get the structural engineering revised and then cost estimated out. So it, it's definitely weeks, not days, to your point.
To go to the broader point, though, could you retrofit the building down, with all your experience in regard to, you know, you know, we've got some engineers in, in the room. And, and the principal one right now I'm talking to, could you retrofit this to harden that if we ever needed to go another? Or is it, would you think you would have?
So, if the check's big enough, the answer's always yes. You know, there, there are systems out there that effectively you build a foundation outside the existing building footprint and you basically put steel columns outside of the existing building walls. So it would almost be like a skin on a skin, and then you enc clad that entire thing. So effectively, when you're done, the walls look like they're thicker to carry the weight above it. And you effectively end up with a building on top of a building. So is it possible from an engineering perspective? Absolutely. Is it cost prohibitive at times? You know, at times, it, it is more financially feasible to go acquire another piece of property, even if that's immediately adjacent to it, and, and build a new building, even with the land acquisition costs. So those are certainly all options on the table for the future, if, if there was a desire to go that way. But yes, you can always, there's always an engineering possibility.
And then kind of what we were talking about earlier, I think that the bigger question we've been talking about is, if we're ever going to move down to downtown, and like you said, the need versus the want. I don't think we're ever going to need, I mean, there's obviously a want, but wants sometimes are pretty strong too. So I mean, I think that's really the long-term question, is if we're looking at a hundred-year building, then we need to look at more than just a ten-year plan, so. I think, I think pretty much everybody knows what they're going to do, though.
All right, thank you. Councilman Dovey?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Councilmember Honda brings up what I think is a very good point. If, first of all, if we're going to build a City Hall downtown, it's not going to happen anytime soon. And if it's a couple million dollars more to have a foundation and the right steel to go up later at this maintenance facility, to me, that seems like it would be a great interim step and investment, because it gives you the options for the next twenty years. If you need space, you can build it up. Because we're never going to justify, in my opinion, moving City Hall downtown because of, of need. It's only going to be because of want. Because we could, you know, if we get another fifty people, you go across the street and you rent the building, and that's going to be way less expensive than building a new City Hall downtown. So if we're building City Hall downtown, it has to be part of a, a major development, redevelopment, and it has to be an anchor to bring more business and more things down there. It's not because we get twenty more people. You can never justify the exponential cost for those people to go downtown. But if you, in my opinion, if you, if it was a couple million dollars, I don't know what it is, it's probably more than that. But if it wasn't too much to add the foundation and the steel for the core of the building, so you could go up later, that gives a lot of time over the next thirty-year period to say, hey, we're going to add the top for growth at a later date at ten or twelve million or twenty million, and then go downtown in forty years or thirty years. I hope not that long, but it just seems, I don't know how you're going to justify moving...
I hope not that long, but it just seems, I don't know how you're going to justify moving, that's the only way you could, in my opinion, move, it's steps to get there. And I would just like to know what the cost is. I mean, that should be, the architect should be able to tell you real quick, and it may be more than anybody wants to do, but if it's not more than a couple million dollars, that might be something that you add to the, the feature of what we're doing.
Got it, I will take it. Council President?
Well, thinking outside the box, I'm just wondering if we, if the idea is you want to have a building in the downtown core to support TC3, and we have property to do that already, I, I'm just wondering if you think outside the box to just take the, our council chambers and administration and move that into the downtown core and then use this space here for the extra folks you need? That, just an idea, you can just look at it. It's not like a big idea, just a small idea, but it would, it would support what I think Trent wants in, in TC3. Just might look at it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Sevadossen?
Thank you, Mayor. I think when we're talking about want, want versus need, I'm not thinking of staffing, I'm also thinking of the public. You talked about ad hoc, the council ad hoc and then the citizen ad hoc, they both recommended that we move to downtown. But also, it, it reduces the environmental footprint because we're talking about that at some point. So, we're closer to transit, the facilities would be closer to each other. And so, I think we need to really consider that because it's about access also. And so, I would not rule out want versus need because it could be a need for the public that we are out there, that, I'm sorry, not we, but the City, City Hall is there, and that they could go run in and ask questions. And we've always talked about where the City Hall is located and how people can't find it. I mean, this has been a discussion for a long time, so I would like to see that we continue exploring and not say that, you know, let's not do it at all. And cost, everything understandable, but the cost is never going to get cheaper, it's going to continue to rise. And so, I, I would like for us to consider all the time spent to get to where we are today would be a great, but what Council President just brought up might be a, a good way of doing it, too. I think, like I said, as we're talking about want versus need, it's about the public, what do they need, not what, how comfortable we are being here or not being here, or the proximity really matters also.
Okay. Councilwoman Doby?
I have one more question. If, if the city won the municipal lottery, let's say the state of Washington said, here's 100 million dollars, build a City Hall, how long from start to finish does that project take? Four years? Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other, any other questions? Of staff, of me, of anybody? Okay, EJ, find out the information, just have a conversation, share it with council, but you, you need to be able to move forward by the first, is that correct?
Yes.
Of March?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, we, we are adjourned until 6:30 for the regular city council meeting. Thank you.
Mayor, we have executive session.
Oh, we have executive session. Pending litigation pursuant to RCW 4230-1101I, and expected duration 15 minutes. We'll be in recess for that purpose.